Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Wednesday, Monday, April 22, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kiel Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Lavell, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is proclamations. However, Councilman Coghill is not here yet. Therefore, if we could read the ones that need read into the record. We have one from Councilman Wilson, one from Councilman Coghill, and one from Councilwoman Smith.
Oh, I have one.
Just being read in.
Councilman Wilson presents now, therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and officially celebrate Arbor Day on April 27th in the city of, in the city, and does commend the park's designation as an arboretrium that will protect and preserve the ecosystem at Riverview Park. And Councilman Coghill presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, April 28, 2024, to be Thomas Nasse Edgoes Day in the City of Pittsburgh. And Councilwoman Smith presents, be it further resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare April 28, 2024, to be Workers Memorial Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those three proclamations have been approved. And next we'll go to Councilman Coghill. I believe you have two to be presented.
Colleen Laurie, you guys want to come up? Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I want to thank you for being here again. And we look forward to taking the pledge after we read the proclamation. Okay? So whereas every day across the city and the nation, people fall prey to a variety of crimes affecting them in many different ways. The support of victim needs highlighted by the family of Melissa Bowers after she was killed by her abusive boyfriend in 2012, as families of victims are often left struggling after crimes take place. And whereas, established in 1981, National Crime Victims' Right Week was set with the goal to get people to confront and remove barriers to achieve justice for all victims of crimes. And whereas, during this week, we work to raise awareness about crime victims' rights and services while celebrating the accomplishments of crime victims' rights awareness. And whereas, this year's theme asks for all of us, how would you help? The theme, a call to action to create a safe environment for crime victims to share their voices and stories and allow for us to offer support options for life-saving services and ultimately hope. And whereas, one such way to help is by taking the Center for Victims' Men's Challenge Pledge, which states, "I pledge not to participate in or approve of or remain silent above violence. I pledge to be an active bystander who will speak out about violence against women and girls. I will encourage all men and work together with Center for Victims and use our collective voices and resources to end all forms of violence." And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the week of April 21 through 27, 2024, as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in the City of Pittsburgh. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of April 21 through 27, 2024, to be National Crime Victims' Rights Week in the City of Pittsburgh.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve.
We lost our president here. All those approve?
He's actually busy signing the papers.
So with that, thank you for being here.
I want to thank Councilman Coghill, Councilwoman Teresa. They've been advocates for me as far as I've been going through the past 12 years. I just finished having Resolution HR 332 at the House of Representatives for the same thing, representing for the, April, for the National Crime Victims' Week. So, and I'm not done yet. But I have to thank the Center for Victims. They are the ones that created the Men's Challenge. But I welcome everybody to take this pledge because times have changed. So it's not just for men, even though it's called the Men's Challenge. It's for all bodies to actually stand up and step up and actually say, you are not alone to any victims that are violent, especially domestic violence. That's all. Thank you.
Are we supposed to stand and take it?
I want to ask permission.
Get to the mic. Colleen Bowers is an amazing person. One of the worst things that can happen to you in your life is when you lose a child. Nothing is worse than that. And she has taken that pain and turned it around. She has raised lots of funds for us. She's always participated in every victim event we've ever had. She raised money for us, and we dedicated our music room to her daughter's memory. And she just never stops. She's relentless. And we really need victims to have a voice like Colleen. It's because victims' voices speak louder than anything we do. But when a victim speaks, people, people get it. So we, like I said, we dedicated the music room to her because, you know, music soothes everybody's soul. So thank you all for recognizing Colleen and victims of violence. Yes. Is it on here? Oh, here. It's hard to believe I get nervous sometimes, but I do. Okay, Center for Victims, Men, Men Ending Violence Challenge Pledge. I pledge not to participate in, approve, or remain silent above violence. I pledge to be an active bystander who will speak loud and about violence against women and girls. I encourage all men to work together with Center for Victims and use our collective voices and resources to end all forms of violence. As I had said, you know, Colleen has run with this, but we had, our original group was a group of several men who did a commercial for us. It was funded by the... No, no, no. FICAPA, yeah, the Black Men's Professional Fraternity. Can't think of the name. Anyway, they all did a big presentation. They did commercials for us. Mr. Rooney was in the commercial. Lots of guys really stepped up to the plate several years ago for that. So I urge you all to please consider how important it is as for men to stand up against other men when you see violence. So thank you again for signing this pledge. It means a lot.
I guess I'm going to take your job. I'd like everybody to at least, if you could stand and put your hands up and say, "I pledge." That way it's official.
You want us to officially take the pledge?
Yes, please.
So I'll read it, and then I guess we'll all say, "I do," if that's satisfying? Okay. "I pledge not to participate in, approve of, or remain silent about violence. I pledge to be an active bystander who will speak out about violence against women and girls. I will encourage all men and women to work together with Center for Victims and use our collective voices and resources to end all forms of violence." All those taking a pledge, please say, "I do." I do. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to add violence against any person, okay?
Hey, guys, come on up. Timmy. Next, we're going to bring up our motorcyclists. It's motorcycle wear this week. Where's Timmy at? Thank you for being here. Whereas every day across the city and the nation, people fall prey to a variety of crimes affecting them in many different ways. The support of victim needs highlighted in the family Melissa Bowers after she was killed by her abusive boyfriend. This is the wrong crock, right? Okay. Whereas, the safety of all Pittsburgh motorists is an issue of the utmost consequence. And all motorists should unite in safe sharing of the City of Pittsburgh roadways. And whereas, motorcyclists riding in a popular form of recreation and transportation for thousands of people across Pittsburgh and the Commonwealth. And whereas, more than 875,000 licensed motorcyclists are required to keep their vehicles inspected and obey current laws relative to the Operator Safety Equipment Guide. And whereas, in efforts to reduce the number of motorcycle crashes and fatalities, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation and the City of Pittsburgh encourages all motorcyclists to avoid becoming another crash statistic and take advantage of the free training courses offered through the Pennsylvania Motorcycle Safety Programs. And whereas, it is especially significant that citizens of the City of Pittsburgh be aware of motorcyclists on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of staying alert, practicing safe driving techniques, and promoting motorcycle safety. And whereas, during the month of May, the City of Pittsburgh and the Alliance of Bikers Aimed Toward Education, ABATE, of Pennsylvania Allegheny County Chapter will continue their advocacy of motorcycle safety. And whereas, the City of Pittsburgh encourages all motorcyclists to continue their efforts to promote safety and motorcycle awareness, and all drivers to respect the unique safety needs of motorcyclists. And now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare May 2024 Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good job, guys.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much. Esteemed members of council, this is greatly appreciated. I thank you very much. As you are aware, Election Day is tomorrow. Take the time out to cast your vote. Urge family and friends to do the same. It's imperative to rally behind our elected officials to ensure our voices are heard. Every vote counts. I'm John Samodowsky, President of Allegheny County ABATE. I trust that this year finds you and your family in good health and safety. We remain steadfast in our mission to educate new riders, reduce the possibility of accidents. We want to ensure that everyone can recognize and understand the potential dangers for riders. We at ABATE, an alliance of bikers aimed towards education, working with our legislators, have created a Pennsylvania Motorcycle Safety Program, which has set clear and realistic goals, provided adequate training and resources, created a positive safety culture, involved and empowered our members and constituents, and monitor and evaluate results. The danger least expected comes the quickest. The accidents on the road have brought countless injury and deaths. So four states of mind that cause or contribute to critical errors are rushing, frustration, fatigue, and complacency. Sounds like everybody behind the wheel. So... Three keys to safety are to recognize, evaluate, and control hazards. One, recognize. Pay attention. Two, evaluate. Do not normalize danger. Three, control hazards. Actively look for potentially bad situations, as we say, keep your head on a swivel. Ultimately, though, safety is an individual's responsibility. So you should be prepared mentally and physically. Be alert and aware. Avoid hazards. Anticipate problems. Trust your instincts and training. Never put yourself in the line of fire. So these gatherings offer an opportunity to strengthen our bonds and help all of us on our journey without harm or injury. Whether a new to the road or a seasoned rider, we ask that you prioritize safety. Thank you very much.
Maybe if I can get all members up here for another photo, please? I'll pass it. Always District Two Day in City Council. Yeah, is that yours? That's yours, right?
Yep.
Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters that concern official action or deliberation which may be forced in council and for Fannie will not be permitted. Our first and only registered speaker, Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Bell Souter, New Delhi, India. First in the world in fathers helping their children's education. Global Intelligence Society candidate for President, 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. Optimal Info Intel for Education. I'm a member of the American Mathematical Society. A concern of council is Take a Father to School Day, TFSD. Pittsburgh Public School Proclamation Involvement on the 16th of April, 2024. Dr. Father Pro Chandelot, CMU Math Department, I think is model, excellent. At the proclamation, $200,000 a year. Non-elected PPS Superintendent Dr. W. Walters, $100,000 a year. Mayor claimant can't, won't check his own vote, Ed Ganey. D E I Ganey made an inclusionist TFSD statement that, quote, "All are welcome." All are baby fathers. Shade Adu, baby father. She's a Nigerian English person. African Nigerian Haza, TFSD. And Rigar Jamaya, academics. And Ilamin Lasafi, math. The numeracy of more than 50% of PPS students of non-white Euro and non-Asian descents is sub proficient per high school grade 2013 to 2024. Has TFSD helped? TFSD, yes. Rah rah, we hear that. But numeracy up? No. TFSD, yes, but the average father's numeracy is below basic, so no. But did Walters and Ganey stress math with the, with the, with the Papas who were here? No, TFSD is anti-batari math. It's academicist. Asia Nohongo, TFSD, Soshite Jinshu no Hyagen, race of the people. One, no fathers of Asian descent at the TFSD 16 April 2024 that I could see. Secondly, there were no kudos to the fathers of Asian descent whose role model, presence, first class, info intel in numeracy and literacy and constructive critical negativity aids their kids in numeracy and literacy achievement. Nothing. TFSD is exclusionist, naito tute ante bayado equality tio sei diversity. TFSD, in my view, in this sense, is racist.
Thank you. We will now take comment from those in chambers. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, provide your name, neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good morning. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I've come today to tell you that I live in Kaley, where I was, and I am afraid for my life. Mr. Coghill, you took this pledge. Help me because that woman is back in the building on my floor. When I went to go to the elevator, I heard her. She's loud. I heard her. That's the one that said, "Ms. Brown better keep her mouth shut. She better mind her own business." When we came down and we told you, five women came and we was telling you that this woman is back in the building. Now, what I heard her, as I was coming to leave, and she's by the elevator, and my heart just dropped. And I just started walking slow, 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 hoping that, I thought she was going to get on the elevator. But she was still talking. As out the corner of my eye, she seen me. And she ran into this man's door. She ran into his apartment and slammed the door. She's in the building again. She comes every day. Now, I'm told that she's back in the building, that her mother supposedly went to Arbor. But her mother paid the rent for a woman that she beat a woman and her mother with a hammer. So she paid this woman's rent, so I guess so she don't testify against her. I know another woman that this woman took and was banging on her door. She called her three daughters, and they told her, "Leave her alone." Do you understand? I am 77 years old. I try to help people. It should not be that she will be... That's HUD. This is a building with HUD. She's allowed in the building. And she's beat up women. She poured grano in the man's fish. She stood up and said, "I'm the devil, the MFing devil." And they said that she also sells crack in the building. I'm saying all this, and I wouldn't have. My daughter told me, "Forget about it, Mom. Forget about it." I can't when I see her just about every day. And if I'm in the elevator, she said, "Ms. Brown, you look pretty." I didn't say nothing. She said, "You know, you hear me." Why should I have to go through it? If she's on the elevator, I don't get on. But I came from church with the Bible, thinking about praying. I done prayed. And I'm feeling good. And when she takes and tells me that I look nice, and when I don't say nothing, she, "You hear me?" That's more than once that she's done it. And she's back in the building. And you, Mr. Coghill, he seen her run up on me screaming. And you remember, I, you said, I thought she lived here. I said, "No, her mother." And like she said, as long as her mother live there, she's coming. And she's bold enough to do it. And she's a bad actor. I know it. We in the community know how bad she is. Do you understand? I am 77 years old. I don't mess with her. I told her, "Please don't say nothing to me." And she still does if she sees me. That's why I try to hide from her.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
The new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 392, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Public Safety to receive a grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in a form of Narcan, fentanyl test strips, and Zaline test strips valued at $40,583.50 to be distributed by the Office of Community Health and Safety. Bill 393, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to transfer the ongoing lease agreement with Allegheny Health Network, AHN, to the city as contractually obligated by Controller's Contract Number 54321 for the hub location supporting the Reaching Out on the Streets Roots Program. The city will transfer the lease agreement between AHN and Bernie's Photo Center from AHN to the city for the property located at 519 East Ohio Street for the timeframe of April 30 of 2024 through September 30 of 2026 for a total cost not to exceed $72,500. And Bill Number 409, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Site under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, that certain site known as Veterans Memorial Parklet, located at 1020 Brookline Boulevard in Brookline in the 19th Ward, City of Pittsburgh. The owner of the property supports the nomination, and there is no cost to the city.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill, you have a request for Rule 8?
Yeah, motion to waive the rules of council.
Thank you. On Bill 409, is there a second?
So move. Let me second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill 409 will be on this afternoon. Bill 409 will be on this afternoon's standing committee agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 394, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Crayon Software Experts, LLC for a Microsoft Enterprise Agreement in order to provide software licensing and support and to provide fixed true up pricing from Microsoft's complete catalog of available products for each year of the contract at a cost not to exceed $5,335,326 over three years.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Uh, no new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith, Chair of Recreation Youth and Senior Services.
No new papers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 397, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title I Administrative Fiscal Article 1 Human Resources, Chapter 192, Pensions, Section 192.27, Death Benefits, by allowing the Municipal Pension Fund to approve adjustments to the table of survivor benefit conversion rates as mortality rates change. Bill 398, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Shelley Danko Day for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $61,607.12 in Full and Final Settlement of a Case. And Bill 399, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Stephen Whitlock and his attorneys Lieber, Hammer, Huber, and Paul, PC, for a Single Payment in 2024 in an Amount Not to Exceed $90,000 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation File in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. And Bill 400, Resolution Providing for the Creation of the Equitable Development Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit and Expenditures of Such Funds. This fund is to be used to address community goals, including but not limited to workforce development and community reinvestment.
Thank you. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 401, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement or Agreements with Michael Baker International, Inc. for Costs Associated with the Charles Anderson Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $3,826,849.93, An Increase of $696,525.27 from the Previously Legislated Contract Authorization. And Bill Number 402, Resolution Amending Resolution 657 of 2022, Which Provided for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design, Final Design, and Right-of-Way Phases of the Swindell Bridge Construction Project, and Providing for the Payment of Costs Thereof Not to Exceed $3,800,000, An Increase of $2,100,000 from the Previously Executed Agreement, reimbursable at 95% in a municipal share of Commonwealth incurred costs not to exceed $7,000. Five, $5,500 increase from the Previously Executed Agreement.
Councilwoman Warwick, do you wish to waive Rule 8 on Bill 401? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill 401 will be on today's standing committee agenda. Uh, that takes us to Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 403, Ordnance Accepting a New Street Name, Term in Garden Circle, in the 27th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by CPAC in March 2024. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title IV Public Places and Property, Chapter 420 Uniforms, Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. I have no bills for introduction. That moves us to unfinished business, of which I have two bills.
Unfinished Business, Bill 283, Resolution Appointing Tammy Thompson as a Member of the Land Bank Board of Directors, Replacing Wayne Fontana with a Term to Expire, January 1, 2027. And Bill Number 358, Resolution Appointing Ellie Fisher as a Member of the Housing Opportunity Fund Advisory Board with a Term to Expire, April 30, 2025.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Both appointees have been approved. Is there anything else under unfinished business? If not, the next order of business is reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Strasburger presenting on the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number 386, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 345, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article 1 Administration, Chapter 219 Operating Budget, by revising Section 21903 Collaborative Budgeting Process to require the City Controller to certify revenues and expenditures for five years rather than one. Bill 349, Resolution Authorizing the Office of the Mayor to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Precision Infrastructure Management to Provide Professional Services Related to the ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan at a Cost Not to Exceed $620,740 over two years. Bill 350, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Gannett Fleming, Inc. for Expert Witness Services in Connection with Two Matters File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed $16,890.71 over one year. And Bill 384, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 105 of 2024, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of City Planning to enter into an amended professional services agreement with Bromberg and Associates, LLC for Effective Communication Services for City Meetings and Events by Correcting the Funding Account.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills will vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, presenting on the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number 387, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 352, Resolution Amending Resolution 464 of 2023, Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute an Agreement with the Pennsylvania Resource Council in order to continue providing electronic waste collection and recycling services for city residents by extending PRC services for an additional one year and increasing the authorized spend by $135,000 for a new total amount not to exceed $310,000.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Councilman Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say, I'm going to vote for this today because I think that we need to continue to do this. But I do want to say, um, the initial program was started by former Councilman Dan Gilman and myself, uh, years ago. And it was done, when we did it at the time, it was with the intention that, you know, residents could do this for free and that, so that we're not picking up, because there's a cost with us having to pick things up from the hillside, having to pick them up off the streets when they cause landslides. You know, TVs and, you know, that kind of equipment, they're heavy and they do sometimes cause slides. So the idea was to do it for free. So I hope when they redo this, that they look into a way that we could maybe do some, offer some of this service. I know some of it is free, but I would like to do it, the service in general free, because I think there's a cost associated with not doing the program free. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Sharland, presenting on the Committee of Human Resources.
Councilperson Sharland presents Bill Number 388, Reported a Committee on Human Resources for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 342, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with Goodwill of Southwestern PA for administrative services related to the 2024 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a Cost Not to Exceed $200,000.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is not ready for final action. All those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Wilson, presenting on the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 389, Reported a Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 59, Ordnance Amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning Code, Article V Use Regulations, Chapter 911 Primary Uses, as Section 911.02 Use Table in Chapter 911.04.8.69 Use Standards to Permit Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses in Residential Single-Unit Detached Districts Subject to Certain Standards. And Bill 353, Resolution, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of City Planning to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements at no Cost to the City of Pittsburgh between the City of Pittsburgh and Janelle Young for the Installation and Maintenance of a mural at the Arch Street Basketball Court.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
This is, uh, Councilman Wilson's committee and these are single detached.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to vote yes, but I want to say, can I just say real quickly? It's because I looked it up and almost none of the parcels are in my district be affected. But I will say this, if I see my district being disproportionately affected or something happening there, I'll change the zoning just for our district. Thank you. I think, and I do, I'm going to add this. So my vote is yes, aye. Sorry, sorry. But I do want to add that I think it's time council members remembered that we represent districts. We're not elected to represent the whole city. That's the mayor. So, thank you.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bills haven't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilwoman Gross, presenting on the Committee of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 391, Reported a Committee on Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 346, Resolution Amending Resolution 763 of 2023, Which Authorize Additional Funding for Maintenance Services Related to the Falcon Red Document Scanning Station by Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to Extend the Agreement with Opex Corporation for Maintenance Services and Associated Software License for One Year and Increase the Authorized Spend by $26,310 for a New Total Not to Exceed of $106,730.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All those in favor will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye, because Councilwoman Gross told me she's talked to the director. Thank you.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine a, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Mosley, presenting on the Committee of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 390, Reported a Committee on Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs for April 17, 2024 with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill 347, Resolution Amending Resolution 64 of 2022, That Authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into a Cooperation Agreement with the Pittsburgh Regional Transit, Allegheny County, and the Urban Redevelopment Authority Concerning the Bus Rapid Transit Project. In order to increase funding for BRT, project staffing contributed to the city from Pittsburgh Regional Transit by $307,500. And Bill Number 348, Resolution Amending Resolution 291, Requiring a Council Vote on an Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement or Agreements between the City of Pittsburgh and Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh, County of Allegheny, Pittsburgh Public School District, and Pittsburgh Land Bank for the Shared Operation and Administration of the Pittsburgh Land Bank.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is not ready for final action. All those in favor will aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill hasn't received the legally required numbers of votes. It is passed finally. And finally, that takes us to, no, we did Councilman Mosley. No.
Yep.
We did, right? Okay, thank you. So, sorry. So that takes us to motions and resolutions. Councilwoman?
Um, yeah, thank you. Uh, I just, uh, quickly wanted to say a few words, uh, about the anti-Semitic graffiti that was, um, spray painted on a sidewalk in the North Side yesterday. Um, since the Hamas attacks on October 7th and the subsequent Israeli military response, um, in Pittsburgh, and this is just the ones that I know of, there has been graffiti in Squirrel Hill and Somerset. These are things that we've all seen on the news and then also just reported tomorrow. So there's been graffiti in Squirrel Hill and Somerset. There has been harassment and bullying of both Jewish and Palestinian students at school and on the way home from school. There have been pro-Israel and pro-Palestinian yard signs on people's lawns that have been defaced and destroyed. Uh, there have been customers in coffee shops speaking Hebrew who have been harassed with like pro-Palestinian messaging on their coffee cup that they got, like from the barista. Uh, there have been people wearing, uh, kifas, the, the, you know, scarves or Muslim guard called terrorists on the street. Uh, there have been synagogues that have been vandalized and Islamic centers that have been threatened, uh, to the point that all of them have had to beef up their security. Um, this has to stop. Nobody can claim to support peace and then commit acts that are intended to harass- Nobody can claim to support peace and then commit acts that are intended to harass people and frighten them, make them feel afraid in their homes and in their communities. Um, the Pittsburgh police are, of course, investigating, uh, various criminal acts and, you know, for this, uh, incident in the North Side, DPW crews are, um, working today to get the supplies to clean the brick and, um, get that graffiti cleaned up. Uh, so I, I, I just want to say that, you know, whatever your stance is on the situation in Israel and Palestine, there's no place for hate, antisemitism, Islamophobia, any kind of hate here in Pittsburgh. So if you are a leader in this space, among one of these movements, and I know there are many, and there are many groups that are, you know, whether you're a leader or just a neighbor in your community, please, um, remind each other that this is not the Pittsburgh that we want to live in. And we do not want the pain and suffering of this global conflict to create pain and suffering here. We can disagree, we can debate, uh, we can do all these things peacefully, um, because that is, that's the Pittsburgh that I want to live in and that's the Pittsburgh I think we all want to live in. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, thank you. Well said. I want to change topics. Um, there's going to be a number of, although not immediately before, so there's going to be a number of important contracts coming down the line, um, including PWSA's renegotiated contract as one such example. And I believe there may be slight differences in the power, the, how the powers and, uh, authorities of the legislative and administrative branch are perceived. And so therefore, I want to try to iron out any differences on the front end before we start entering to those contracts. Therefore, if someone would please be willing to open up, offer up a motion to call an executive session on regulatory compliance with the Home Room Charter in the City Code relative to contracts.
Motion for executive session?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. I'll work with the clerk to get that scheduled. Anything else from members? Councilwoman Smith?
I would just like to say, I would also like to have that conversation publicly because I think the public needs to hear what we're being told by people that are supposed to be our legal advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. We can certainly do that as well. If nothing else, we do have meeting announcements. Council Standing Committee Meeting is scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30 PM. Speaker Registration will close today at 12:30 PM. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Then on Monday, April 29th at 1:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 256 relative to the downtown real estate tax exemption chaired by Councilman Wilson. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, April 30th and Wednesday, May 1st at 10 AM.